Twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. This is a Prescott City Council voting meeting. Councilman Lamerson, do you have any announcements for us today? Scanning, scanning the crowd.
I may have. You know, you never know with me. One of the things that I like to do is look out and see who's out there and acknowledge them. I see an Air Force sergeant sitting in the audience. I'd like to acknowledge him. Thank you for being here, General. Thank you. And I see a good friend that's always here that's on a walker. Hi, Gary. Nice to have you here. So, other than that, I think we're doing pretty good.
Thank you. Today, we have an invocation from Pastor Matt Cotman with Solid Rock Church, and then the pledge led by Councilman Sishka.
Join me in prayer. Father, we give you thanks for your reign and your sovereignty. And in your sovereignty, you've chosen to work through governments, through legislations. And Father, we pray for those sorts of things as we gather here today as decisions are made. We ask, Lord, that you would guide and lead those decisions for the flourishing of those made in your image, for the wisdom needed in order to direct resources to where they need to go. Father, you have made us to enjoy your good creation, and we ask that you would help us to do so as we live in this great city, as we look to you who gives us life and breath. And so, Father, we want to surrender this time to you and recognize you as being a good Lord over all. And we ask this in the name of your Son who died to take away our sin, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Would you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Let's please call roll.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Here.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilwoman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
We have seven that are attending.
Okay, thank you very much. So, let's move on to consent agenda. Any member would like to pull anything from consent today?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to pull item G, H, and then on consent ordinance, A, for comment.
Ordinance A, okay. So, do I hear a motion for the rest of consent?
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items six A through six I excluding six G and six H.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote. Mayor Pro-
I'm sorry, Mayor Protem.
I vote, I vote aye.
Passes seven zero.
All right, so Councilman Good, let's move on to item G.
Item G, six G, the Garage City Development Agreement. I was reading the description in the background here and the statement that the final agreement requires the owner to have striping improvements to Willow Lake Road for a left-hand turn pocket into the property. Can you describe how this left-hand turn is going to occur? Is that going eastbound on Willow Lake Road towards the roundabout?
That is correct, Councilman Good.
So, they're going to make a left turn very close to the proximity of the roundabout into that cross-traffic?
Into, from a center lane, that is correct.
So, we will be putting center lane access to that?
That is correct.
Does that exist now?
I believe there's a center lane, is there?
The physical pavement width and such is there? It is not currently striped like that.
Right.
There's not a need, right, Craig, at this point? There's no?
Correct.
So, we can include that center lane without widening the roadway?
That's correct. The roadway was widened previously, so the, the actual width of pavement needed there for that lane configuration exists, just be restriped.
And this is going to be for RV storage primarily?
That is correct.
So, we're going to see pretty large RV vehicles making that turn?
Correct.
I just have a little concern about how close it is to that roundabout and whether they can safely navigate that turn into that entrance without unsafely blocking traffic. Have, has that been studied and reviewed?
That has been considered in the traffic analysis there. Also, between this location and the actual roundabout, there's the entrance into Twin Lakes Market, and the labeled speed coming around that slip lane on to Willow Lake Road, I believe is twenty-five miles an hour.
I wonder what the actual speed is. Just curious. All right, so as long as our analysis indicates that's going to be a safe way of entering the, the property, I don't have any objections.
Any other questions, comments from the council? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda item G.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven, oh, Mayor Protem?
I vote aye.
Passes seven zero.
Okay, then let's move on to item H.
Yeah, I was just, Mayor, looking at this situation here where, again, we are, our authorities being superseded by the state to collect and then return TPT tax, and their administrative, I won't call it skim, but their overhead is increasing by over ten percent to do kind of basic administrative duties that we used to do on our own. Have we audited their performance? Are we sure that the full amount of TPT tax that we're entitled to is being returned to us?
Um, yeah, we're discussing item H or item I?
Oh, am I into I?
Oh, that is correct. So, item I, Councilman deals with Department of Revenue. Item-
I'm on the wrong one.
H is munis.
I don't think I pulled H.
Well, item I, we do have an outside auditor that does, does audits for us. We do track our receipts through the, through the various systems at Department of Revenue. We have an extensive intergovernmental agreement, which will actually be on the council's next agenda, that we've been working with them for the last eighteen months to, you know, identify everybody's duties and stuff. So, you know, we, we are doing the best we can to make sure the money's coming through. The revenues are looking like they are coming through as far as comparing them to the year before. This additional item that was added by the state legislature starting in fiscal year twenty sixteen is actually beyond the cost just, I believe, for tax administration and also includes the other things Department of Revenue is due for the city, like other state shared revenue distributions and things like that.
So, we're actually getting additional information with this increase of, what is it, ten thousand dollars?
Well, we're getting the information that we've contracted with them to get. And this is an item the league works on every year with the legislature to get rid of this fee that was established in the trouble budget year of twenty sixteen. Obviously, there was a lot of other issues this year. I'm sure it'll be an issue again next year. Hopefully, in the future, we can get this fee to go away. And it's fluctuated significantly over the, the years that it's been in place. Obviously, the highest it ever was, was a hundred and sixteen, and that was in the initial year. It also, it went down to a hundred and eighty-five in two thousand seventeen. I mean, it fluctuates depending on the needs at the Department of Revenue.
Well, not like we have a whole lot of choice, but it's, I guess it's difficult to determine whether we're getting a sufficient service for the fee that we're paying.
They collect, if we look at the revenues they're collecting for the city of Prescott, they collect about forty-eight million dollars in local property tax for, or not property tax, privilege tax each year for us. In addition, almost seventeen million in the state shared revenues flow through Department of Revenue to us, so that's sixty-five million dollars of our annual budget flow through Department of Revenue.
So, you're comfortable that we're getting what we're, we should be getting?
I'm comfortable that we really don't have a choice on paying this. If we do not pay it, they'll take it out of our state shared revenues.
Yeah, that is the bottom line, isn't it?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor. I have no further questions.
Yep, Councilman Blair?
I do. Mark, don't sit down. Out of curiosity, since Phil opened up the gate on this item, what was our estimated annual cost for our employees to take care of what they did for collecting our two percent sales tax and TPT?
I'm sorry, I don't have that with me, Councilman. It definitely was more than a hundred and thirteen thousand a year because we had three or four employees at various times, depending on the years.
Doing different things. I, I'm troubled by it, and I'll, I'll tell you why, just because today is very opportune that I paid my tax, my rental tax, TPT, to the state of Arizona three weeks ago, two hundred and eighteen dollars, and I get a check back from Arizona Department of Revenue today saying I overpaid my TPT tax over the estimate, and I'm not sure how they know the estimate. However, they sent me a check back for three hundred and sixty-three dollars, so thank you very much, Arizona.
And that is an area that we continue to struggle with Department of Revenue on is residential rental, and that's an area that we spend a lot of time verifying that the taxes are being collected correctly.
So, I'll bring you a copy of the check as well as a copy of the return.
Yeah, and we constantly work with local landlords to make sure, because they are getting bad information from them, but it is an area that we focus on.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Woodfield. We need-
Madam Clerk, what items were pulled off the consent agenda?
Well, G and H were pulled off.
All right, so I has already been approved.
G and I.
So, H has to be approved.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Padraki. Yep, we need a motion for H.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda item H.
Second.
Have a motion and second, please vote.
Mayor Protem?
I vote aye.
Passes seven zero.
Okay, let's move on to consent ordinance. We have pulled item seven A. Does any member want to pull any other items on consent ordinance?
Mayor, I need to read all the ordinances first.
Okay, go ahead.
Item A, adopt ordinance number twenty nineteen dash sixteen eighty-two repealing Title Four, Chapter four dash eleven, structured sober living homes of the Prescott City Code. Item B, adopt ordinance number twenty nineteen dash sixteen eighty-one, authorizing the acceptance of a map of dedication from Christian Fellowship Church, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said dedication. Item C, adopt ordinance number twenty nineteen dash sixteen eighty, authorizing the acceptance of a water line easement from Central Yavapai Hospital District, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance. Item D, adopt ordinance number twenty nineteen dash sixteen seventy-eight, authorizing the acceptance of a water line easement from Chamberlain Development Prescott LLC, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance. Item E, adopt ordinance number twenty nineteen dash sixteen seventy-seven, authorizing the purchase and acceptance of a public sewer easement from the Donnegan Family Trust, and a public sewer and surface water recharge line easement from the Robert H. Kekeford nineteen seventy-eight revocable trust, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said purchases and acceptance.
Thank you, Maureen. So, item seven A to E, anybody want to pull anything other than A? If not, we'll entertain a motion for the remainder.
Mayor, I move to approve consent ordinance B through E.
Second.
Have a motion and second, please vote. Mayor Protem?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Okay, item seven A, Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the ordinance repealing our current Chapter four eleven structured sober living homes ordinance in the city pursuant to the state law that is going, went into effect on the first of July, and there is a ninety-day period for all sober homes to go through the licensing process. So, September thirtieth, this ordinance, our local ordinance, will be repealed, and the state rules will go into effect. So, as I mentioned before, both myself and city attorney, John Palladini, and I attended all of the four or five rulemaking sessions at the Department of Health Services between October and January of this year. So, here is a situation where the state is superseding what turned out to be, quite frankly, a very good opportunity for us to enact safety regulations within the community in our city, but the state now is superseding our authority. So, we're reasonably confident that the rules, if they're properly applied, will continue to have a safe effect on this community. Our concerns primarily are left whether staffing from the Department of Health Services will be adequate for responding to complaints, and these, these issues, any negative issues will be complaint-driven. So, it's very important that anyone in our local community who is concerned of possibly a new sober home operating in their neighborhood, and if they have concerns, they bring it to the Department of Health Services' attention so that they can be properly responded to, investigated, and if any deficiencies or unlicensed activities are being, occurring, then the department can step in and, and respond to those. So, that's only going to take time for us to see whether that is really going to be as good as it purports to be. We also have concern about municipalities actually knowing where and when these homes, these licensed homes will be operating. Our proximity ordinance is still valid, so the ability for potential sober homes to cluster is still adequately managed by our local ordinance. But we are kind of concerned that licensing can occur without the notification of municipalities. So, again, we need to ask the, the city residents to make sure if they have concerns, they bring those to Department of Health Services, and they can certainly contact us, and we can direct them in the right direction. We do have some additional concerns about how the rules were enacted, and there was some discussion about some of the municipalities trying to correct some of these, I wouldn't say errors, but potential problems legislatively. And the decision was to allow the rules to go into effect so that we can look at the totality of any problems and try to do a collective legislative fix at one time rather than try to engage the legislature and then find out that there are some additional problems down the road, that we would have to do it again. So, we will be watching this implementation closely, and again, we appeal to our, our local residents, if they have concerns in this area, is to bring them to our attention in Department of Health Services. So, with that, I will move to adopt consent ordinance number seven A.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Councilman Sishka, you have a thought?
Yeah. Mark, do they still have to get a Prescott business license?
No.
No.
Okay.
Any other discussion on this item? We have a motion and second, please vote.
Mayor Protem?
Passes seven zero.
Okay, thank you for that. We're going to move on to item eight, liquor license agenda.
Mayor and council, this is a public hearing in consideration for new liquor license application for a series twelve restaurant liquor license from Paula Woolsey, applicant for John's Chop House located at two one seven West Gurley Street. The application has been determined to be in compliance with city requirements. The application fee has been paid, and it's been posted at the site for twenty days, and no comments have been received. And John Panza from John's Chop House is here to talk to us.
Great, yeah, come on up, John.
Hello.
Hi.
Well, thanks so much for doing business here in the city. Excited to come see your place. Can you tell us a little bit about what you're doing there?
Yeah, so we already own Biga here in town. This will be our second restaurant. And really, we're just trying to, we, we kind of heard a demand for a good, proper steakhouse here in town, so we're trying to supply the town with that, still sticking to our biggest standards of good, clean food from scratch, as local as possible, helping out the community the best way we can.
No, that's great. Thank you so much for investing in Prescott. I'm sure many of us will be down there. Councilman Blair?
Where's the location? I, I know there's a, an address on here, but I'm not familiar.
It's the old Genovese's location. It's just right down the street from Hotel St. Michael.
Nice place.
Yeah, very nice.
And John, I do want to compliment you. My wife and I went down and had a very nice dinner and with several of our friends, and we were all very pleased with the quality of the food.
Thank you. That means a lot. Thank you.
Well, thanks so much for coming in today. Appreciate it.
Of course, thank you.
We'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote. Mayor Protem?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Mayor, I move to approve recommendation for liquor license application number six four seven eight eight for a new series twelve restaurant liquor license for John's Chop House located at two one seven West Gurley Street.
Second.
We have a motion and second, please vote.
Mayor Protem?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Okay, let's move on to item two.
The next item is a public hearing in consideration for a person-to-person liquor license application for a series six bar liquor license from Russell Newton Robert, applicant for Lizard's Lounge LLC located at one twenty North Cortez Street. The application has been determined to be in compliance with city requirements. The fee has been paid, and it has been posted at the site for twenty days, and no comments have been received, and I do not believe he's here today.
Anybody from Lizards here? No? Okay. Well, thank you for that. We'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Mayor Protem?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Mayor, I move to approve recommendation for liquor license application number six seven two eight six for a person-to-person transfer for a series six bar liquor license for Lizard's Lounge located at one two zero North Cortez Street.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Mayor Protem?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
All right, thank you for that. Let's move on to item three.
The next item is a public hearing in consideration for an acquisition of control liquor license application for a series twelve restaurant liquor license from Paula Woolsey, applicant for Biga located at six two three Miller Valley Road. This application has been determined to be in compliance with city requirements. The fee has been paid and has been posted at the site for twenty days, and we haven't received any comments. And again, John Panza will be the-
You're back up.
Representative.
What can you tell us about Biga?
So, we've owned Biga for just over two years now. It was already established for a few years before that. We introduced a lot of local and kind of some higher-end and different, different styles to it. This one was simply to coincide the names on both liquor license for both restaurants, but-
Very good. Well, thanks again. Appreciate your work in town. We'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Mayor Protem?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Mayor, I move to approve recommendation for liquor license application number six five nine nine zero for an acquisition of control for a series twelve restaurant liquor license for Biga located at six two three Miller Valley Road.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Mayor Protem?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
All right, thanks. Let's move on to item four.
This is a consideration for a permanent extension of premises liquor license application for a series twelve restaurant liquor license from Jalanta Moskovich, applicant for Atmosphere Restaurant located at two three two South Monizuma Street. The application has been determined to be in compliance with city requirements. The fee has been paid, and no public comments were received, and I believe I see her in the audience.
Come on up. Thanks for being here today. I've not had the pleasure to be at your restaurant, but I've heard great things, and I'd love to come check it out.
Well, thank you. We'd love to have you.
So, you're on South Monizuma, kind of near Soul Ride?
Right next door to Soul Ride.
Okay, great. Anything else you'd like to add?
Well, the reason for this is we're planning on putting a few outdoor tables. People in Prescott love outdoor dining, and we'd like to certainly accommodate them as best we can.
No, that's great. Yeah, we have great weather for that. In the front or the back are you doing that?
In the front.
Okay, great. Good for you.
Can you tell us about the restaurant?
Well, we're small. We only have six tables and four places at the bar, and again, very similar to what John's doing, we're fresh, local, higher-end, I guess, of simple food elevated, and our menu changes constantly because we are so small, we're able to do that.
And you take reservations?
Yes, sir, we do. They're recommended.
How many tables do you expect to have on the sidewalk there?
Two to three, small ones.
Well, that'll expand your volume significantly, wouldn't it?
It shall.
Yeah.
It shall.
Well, perfect. Well, thanks so much for being in here today, and thanks for your work in the city. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve recommendation for liquor license application number one nine dash zero zero seven for a permanent extension of premise for a series twelve restaurant liquor license for Atmosphere Restaurant located at two three two South Monizuma Street.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Mayor Protem?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
And that's the only motion there, right? Okay. Let's move on then to regular agenda, item nine A.
Approval of agreement for potable water with Hojat Iskari for the Final Platte of Whispering Rock subdivision.
And I'm going to recuse on this and ask my good friend, Councilman Jim Lamerson, to step in for me.
I will do that, Mayor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This item is for approval of a water service agreement for the Whispering Rock Final Platte. The Final Platte actually came before you on June twenty-fifth of this year and was approved by council. Unfortunately, unfortunately, a little lack of coordination between Public Works and Comdev didn't have this coming forward at the same time. However, the development agreement called for sixty acre-feet of water, and that is what is in the water service agreement. That's before you today.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on this item from the council? Not seeing any. Can I get a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number two zero one nine dash-
One moment. Hold on a minute. Okay.
Do you want to take public comment on this item?
We, we can take public, but it wasn't what I was going to do.
Okay.
In fact, we have visited this item at least twice before, but we've got a motion on the floor. We had a second, and I will go to public comment at this point. Is there any public comment?
There is, ma'am. I'm going to share this with the attorney.
That does not involve the item at hand, which is the approval of a water service agreement.
Thank you. I will go back again now that we've had an explanation from the attorney that whatever the question was is not relevant to this particular item on the agenda. I've got an approval, or I'm sorry, a motion and a second with regards to a water service agreement on item A on the regular agenda.
Councilman Lamerson, we still need a second.
I thought I had one.
You have one, Steve Sishka.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, who made the motion then?
Just, let's do it again.
Yeah, let's do it again.
Why don't you make the motion again?
Mayor Protem, I move to approve city contract number two zero one nine dash zero nine four.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. That's what I thought I had the first time. I got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye on your deal here.
Mayor Protem?
Aye.
Passes six zero.
Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move on to saying welcome back, Mayor.
Thank you. Everybody okay? Let's move- Let's move on to item nine B.
Approval of city contract for radio system upgrade project with J.C. Cullen Incorporated DBA Niles Radio and city contract with Titan Power.
Never a good start when IT guy can't figure out how to run this. Mayor, Mayor Mangrilli, Council, Nate Keegan from the IT Department. Usually when I come before you, I bring software-related items, which are very abstract. This is actually something that is very physical, so by your leave, I'd like to show you some of what I'm talking about because this is a project that has a lot of, no pun intended, parts and pieces, moving parts and pieces. What you see in front of you here is one of our radio sites. The IT department operates and maintains seven radio sites spread throughout the Prescott metropolitan area. If I were seeing this for the first time, my impression would be there's a lot of stuff in there, there's a lot going on. And that's one of the challenges with our radio system, isn't that it doesn't operate, there's a lot going on with it. Let me give you an example. This is a radio. And by radio, I mean the backend radios, the radios that allow police, fire, the airport and Public Works to communicate with one another. All the other stuff in the prior slide is really stuff that makes that go, that interconnects that, that takes signals and chops them up and splits them and does stuff with them. Where the rubber meets the road is this. This is where the wiring comes together to allow radio signals to be chopped up and split and to go places and do things. I'm familiar with this type of wiring. It is very easy to make mistakes with it. It is very easy to have wires come off in your hand and there's no guarantee that site to site to site, these wires are going to be the same. The proposal, one of the items we're going to propose to do is replace that with these gizmos, which are approximately five inches by four inches. And what these do is they take the radio signal coming out of a radio, they digitize it. And once you digitize it, all these wires, all this stuff becomes irrelevant because now it's no different than phones, computers, the internet, cell phones, just data. So literally, we can take all that stuff in that picture, chop it up into a space of about, say, a couple of large pizza boxes stacked up on one another, the handful of these network cables. So the bottom line is you look at this radio site times seven, 90% of what you see in here is going to go away. And that's really what fundamentally talking about. And to do that, it's easy to say, hard to do in practice. So we've enlisted two groups, Titan Power, we've used on city projects before, very trusted. They do this sort of thing at the power level for hospitals, casinos, Cox, Cable One. And Niles Radio, Niles has been doing radio since the 1950s. That's all they do. If Niles is not good at radio engineering, Niles is probably out of business. Having said that, I'd be more than happy to take your comments and questions.
Okay, thank you, Nate. Questions, comments from the council? Councilman Good?
Yeah, this is a substantial allocation for converting over to this digital system. So this $600, $860,000 plus combined, this would be a one-time initial conversion cost?
Yeah, you're looking at a one-time. Most of that cost is labor. And what that does is gives you a 10 to 15-year life of that system before you would have to do that. And when you would have to do that, you'd be looking at incremental upgrades and not a forklift upgrade, if you will, from A to B like this is going to be.
So will this reduce our maintenance costs?
Yes.
How much?
It's going to basically make it so that right now we have a singular radio person. If that radio person needs to work on this, he or she would go to the site, look at the wiring, look at what needs to be done, drive to the next site, which I timed it on Mondays, about 15 minutes per site, go to the next site, go to the next site, come back around and repeat. When you digitize this, I can get monitoring from my home, from here, and that expands the pool of people, radio people, from one person to effectively anyone in IT, and anyone in the city really could follow simple directions. Go here, plug this in, plug in these three cables, you're good to go. In terms of dollars, it's hard to quantify, but it's a drastic reduction and that's especially something you feel, not when everything's running 100% perfectly, you really, really feel it when things are not working perfectly and that never happens at opportune times. It never happens for departments that don't have a lot of, a lot invested in radios being reliable, radios working 100% of the time in all conditions.
So will this give us better performance and better redundancy?
Absolutely.
Can you quantify that in dollar numbers?
As it stands right now, our current radio system is hardwired in a certain configuration. So the real effect of that is if an item fails, it's like having a one-lane road, one-way road, the bridge blows up, game over. Digitizing the system allows us to sustain multiple site failures at the same time without breaking service. How's it do that? It does it through the same technologies that we use on our corporate network, the internet uses, and ostensibly takes it from something that is a bespoke system, hand-configured to work a certain way, to a system that's more like water, where it flows wherever it's allowed to flow and ends up at the right points.
So if we had a failure with our current system, it would be a system failure?
Essentially a system failure.
It could be a modular failure.
Yes.
So we could still maintain substantial performance while we were working on a segmented problem.
The proposed system would be able to sustain the entire loss of three sites before you start to feel pain problems. The current system is one.
Are there any other types of savings potential in the new system being fully digital versus what we currently have on an annual basis?
It gets you out of several things. It gets you out of reactive problem management. And this is, basically, it's analog system. And one of the problems with analog systems is they're great when they work, but they're kind of a black box. You're like, I think it's working, I see blinky lights, nobody's calling, it must be okay. Where a digital system, I can see, I can monitor it, I can sample it, I can divert it, I can actually see what is going on with much better intelligence than I currently have. From a maintenance perspective, any IT system, the fewer moving parts, the more robust, the more reliable the system, period. And that's what this kind of does. It comes from a whole bunch of moving parts and pieces to a handful of moving parts and pieces and a very mainstream, any network person, any radio person that walked off the street would see what we're going to put in and they would instantly understand what it is, what it does, and how to work on it, which gives us lots of flexibility.
Who else is using this particular system?
Coconino County, for example. Niles does their radios for the entire county. Quite a few utilities, APS, SRP. It's a very, what we're proposing is go to a very mainstream, very, I wouldn't say safe because it seems like it's not safe, but a very mainstream, understood, contemporary way to do delivery of radio, which is really no different than delivery of financial data, building permits, phone data, cell phones. It's all the same basic structure, if that makes sense.
What kind of enhanced performance can we expect from this new system?
So with an analog system, if I go back to these cables here, that's the heart of an analog system, cables, copper cables specifically. If I'm sloppy, inattentive, have bad cabling, bad technique, it's like taking a small slice out of that signal. And as it propagates around the radio system, that little slice adds up. It's like taking a partial penny. Pretty soon, it's a little pile of money and then what you get is out in the field doesn't sound that great. Digital system, these guys just basically sit there and they look at this data and they know, oh, I'm going to optimize this data, I'm going to make it sound better. I'm going to constantly correct to see who has the best signal. It just does it. With analog system, you can do the same thing, but it requires that you're very precise, you're very disciplined, and you're able to replicate that setup site to site to site to site to site. What the net result is if you cut corners, you make mistakes, you end up paying for those mistakes and it's very difficult to work out where's thing, where are things off, if that makes sense.
So this will potentially enhance signal strength, et cetera, during different types of atmospheric conditions or just more capable within our kind of varied topography here and peaks and valleys and everything else we have?
Yeah, so in a perfect world, it'd be nice to have somewhere really flat, like Pancake Vale, USA. You could have one radio tower and cover everything. We don't. Niles understands that. They're from Flagstaff, they understand canyons, mountains. The design of this was based on we want 99% coverage, 99 or better percent of the time in Prescott. And that's not just Prescott where it stops, where the city boundaries are, it's basically Prescott, it bleeds into Prescott Valley towards, you know, this basin is what the design goal is, is to map that all out, do the radio engineering required to actually make that something that could be done.
How is this going to interconnect with our neighboring agencies?
That's a very good question, actually. We have been, Prescott's part of Prescott Regional Communication, we're one of the family as well as someone who has some extra responsibilities. We've been working very closely with CAFMA and CAFMA provides the radio for town of Prescott Valley themselves, of course, and YCSO, to make sure that whatever we do is going to be harmonious with what they have. And then that gives us some opportunities moving down the road so that we can kind of blend the radio systems together so that if I'm police or fire, it doesn't really matter whose radio system I'm running on, it just works. That's the goal.
Well, obviously, this is a serious amount of money for initial installation and training. Can we expect any kind of performance savings over the lifetime of the system?
Absolutely. You're going to see your money back quickly on lack of equipment replacement, simplifying the parts and pieces. The maintenance required to deal with the system will be drastically less. The flip side of that is you expand the pool of IT bodies you can run to work on a system that's digital. And in the long run is this, the digital system becomes a software-driven system where an analog system is a hardware-driven system. Software is much cheaper than hardware over the long run.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you very much, Nate.
Absolutely.
Looks like it's a necessary improvement in public safety.
Other questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion. I assume we need to split these into separate motions, City Attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2020-008 with J.C. Cullen Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $450,000.
Second.
Have a motion and second, please vote.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Mayor, I vote aye.
Passes seven zero.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2019-009 with Titan Power in an amount not to exceed $410,623.02.
Second.
We have a motion and second, please vote.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
All right, thank you for that. Let's move on to item nine C, please.
Approval of city contract with Holistic Engineering and Land Management Incorporated for engineering services for completion of a master area drainage study.
What would we do without Mark Woodfill?
Just one question. I think Mr. Shiskin made the comment that it was 410,623.02. And it is 600, or 410,632. So you just switch those two numbers.
623.
I just want to make sure the record's reflected right.
Both on my...
Should be, yeah, it should, looks like it should have been 632.02 from the above paragraph.
Okay.
So nobody can say I don't ever pay attention?
Yeah.
How do you want to fix that, Matt?
Please make a note.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for hearing this agenda item today. We are asking for approval of a helm contract, helm consulting contract for $100,000 not-to-exceed price. This project is one of many of our proposed projects for this fiscal year. You'll see here on the left, we have our studies that we're proposing this year and our capital improvements we're proposing for this fiscal year. This is our first, and the reason we're putting this first is because it's related to about 12 other projects that will be using this data acquired from this project to complete a letter of map provisions and other things, as well as a capital project design. This master area drainage study, it's basically, we're going to be utilizing a lot of modern technology. Our latest NOAA data for weather precipitation, as well as new modeling software that does 2D modeling. And previously, most of our mapping and flood control hydraulics and hydrology have been utilizing 1D. And the difference between that is, 1D is basically they allow water to move forward one step at a time. And 2D allows it to move forward and if it needs to, it can move left or right or forward. And so it's a more intelligent way of doing modeling. And this is what we're proposing with this contract. As an example, just to kind of show you what we're getting with this end product is, this is a 3D model done utilizing this flow 2D product. And basically, you have an area like city of Prescott where there's mountains residing around the perimeter of the city. And it starts to basically take on a rainfall and shows how it flows through the city, inundates the streets and moves through the city and ends. And this data is going to be very helpful. You can, once this data is complete, we can go anywhere in the city, look at a location, determine what our problem areas are, what magnitude of flow we have, the velocity of the flow and the depth of flows. And that's important when you're doing firm mapping or designing capital projects. We're looking at a total of about 80 square miles, that's 80-plus square miles, that's part of this project. And one of the, what you're looking at here is one of the end products is you get a lot of pretty pictures from this. And these different colors are associated with different depths and velocities and so forth that we'll be using for our future projects. One of our future projects that's on our list this year is to actually correct some of our FEMA mapping that in the past was, I think it developed in 2008, using 2008 data. It took FEMA 10 years to get this to us to become effective and by that time, we realized it was erroneous data and it wasn't really helpful for our community. Let me give you an example here, just real quick. So this is our depot marketplace in the center, mid-center there. And these arrows are lined up on Willis Street as the Granite Creek floodplain crosses Willis, heading north. And so this is our existing FEMA firm map for this area. And those yellow arrows I have placed there kind of show you the width of the floodplain. And with this new analysis method, we've run some preliminary math on this. And you can see these arrows moved together here. We're actually looking at narrowing the floodplain and the floodway in these areas. And we had talked about this previously, how we really need to do what we can to improve the downtown floodplain mapping so we can give more opportunities to our local businesses down there. And if, essentially, what we hope to have is an end result, a new FEMA map with this data. At this time, we've met with FEMA and we've talked to them about their timelines when we do our new mapping, which is this fiscal year. And they've said, a minimum three years. And we said, not good for us. We have 10 panels in the city. We asked them, how many panels can we come forward with and do a lomer process, letter of map provision, which takes about 90 days? And they said, ah, two. We said, how about three? And so we're moving forward with three and we're utilizing this data for those lomers, which will be submitted by this consultant by the end of this fiscal year, we're hoping May of 2020.
So the maps would change by May of 2020?
So they would be submitted for a lomer and then we have a 90-day process from that point. So I'm thinking a year and a half, we will have gone through this whole process and receive back feedback from FEMA on those letter of map provisions and hopefully approval on those lomers.
And those panels include Granite Creek Corridor?
It does. Yes, Mayor.
Anything else in your presentation?
That's it. Any questions?
Well, this is much needed. I mean, this is, gosh, I've heard from so many businesses and I'm sure the rest of the council's heard similar stories of just egregious situation. gosh, I've heard from so many businesses and I'm sure the rest of the council's heard similar stories of just egregious situation where their FEMA maps are totally erroneous. And then it pushes the business into a situation where they've got to come into compliance on things that are absolutely ridiculous. So, um, I appreciate you guys, uh, pushing forward on some of these panels on Granite Creek to get it done as quickly as possible 'cause, um, it's, it's really, uh, needed in our city. So I appreciate your work on this. Any questions, comments from the council?
Mayor, I, uh, this, this is Billy. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to, I absolutely agree with you. When those, uh, maps came out a couple of years ago, we just thought, like, they were really overreaching. So I'm very pleased to see that happen.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number two zero two zero dash zero zero six.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Oh, Mayor Pro Tem?
I vote aye.
Passes seven zero.
All right, thank you for that. And our quote for today is coming from George Elliott. Says this, blessed is the man who, having nothing to say, abstains from giving wordy evidence of the fact. This meeting is adjourned.